Madam Chair, Chancellor.
Yes. Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me. I've got the recording started there. There's Trustee Sullivan, that's who I was looking for. And we need to move Trustee Merle up.
And Ayesha somewhere. The only one I don't see is vote, so we have seven.
Trustee Ayers Wilson is also in at this time, sir. So if you're ready to begin, we've got that part taken care of.
Hi, good evening. It's now 5:02 PM and the Chair calls this meeting into order. Before we start, I want to make sure that we go over roll call. So we start with Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Pierce.
Here.
Trustee Stoma.
Here.
Trustee Mario.
Here.
Trustee Vote. Trustee Kane. Perfect. Thank you. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America. Unindication. Just for all.
Dr. Head, do we have the proper meeting notice posted and certified?
Yes, I can certify it was posted in accordance with the law.
Okay, perfect. We will now convene the tax rate public hearing for 2021 and 2022. Do we have any public comments?
Madam Chair, we have no public comment.
Thank you, Desiree. Do we have a presentation for the proposed tax rate?
So Jennifer Mott's going to give a brief overview of the proposed tax rate. Board, this is nothing new. This is what we've presented several times.
Good evening. Next slide, please. So yes, today I just have one slide to show what the proposed tax rate is, which is for maintenance and operations, which is the primary tax revenue source that funds our operating budget. That is proposed at 0.08, so eight cents. And then the INS, that's the Interest and Sinking Fund, so that is the debt service portion of the tax rate. That is proposed at 2.78 cents for a total proposed tax rate of 10.78 cents. Thank you.
And just a reminder, this is the same tax rate that we've had for the last several years, so.
Yes, this is the same tax rate that shows up there as fiscal year 2021 and that we've had for a few years. And then also just to note that we received the certified values from the appraisal districts on August 16th. We did post on our website on September 8th the calculations of the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approved rate. We posted the public hearing notice on our website and published in newspapers on Monday, September 27th. And then today we are holding the public hearing on the proposed tax rate. Thank you.
Link, I just want to make sure there was nobody of the public that wanted to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anyone for a public comment for this particular item? No, we don't.
No? Okay.
Okay. So announcements, the meeting to adopt the proposed tax rate for the Lone Star College would be held today, Thursday, October 7th, 2021, at the board meeting following this public hearing. Thank you. We adjourn the tax rate public hearing. Board members, if you can follow me real quickly. So we're going to go to the public comment. So reconvene the regular meeting. Dr. Head, is there certification for posting the meeting properly posted and certified?
Yes, this meeting has also been posted in accordance with the law.
Okay. Reconvene the regular meeting. Does there any public comments?
Madam Chair, we have one comment on Zoom, Dr. John Bergdoff. If, Link, if you can raise him to Speaker, please, and unmute.
Hello, I believe I'm live?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so sorry I couldn't be with you all in person this evening. I am Dr. John Bergdoff, representing the Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak today. In 2017, the American Federation of Teachers at the national level, in collaboration with the National Education Association, sponsored a conference entitled Grow Your Own: Teacher Diversity and Social Justice Summit. The event was attended by government officials, educators at the K through 12 and college levels, and community activists. The conference focused on the problem that, in recent years, the number of teachers of color in public schools has been in decline, even as the number of students of color has been increasing. Landy Weingarten, National President of the AFT, pointed out that research shows that there are compelling benefits of a teaching force that reflects the diversities of communities. Positive exposure to individuals from a variety of races and ethnic groups, especially in childhood, can help reduce negative stereotypes and unconscious bias. Low-income Black and Brown students who have just one teacher of color in grades three through five are more likely to stay in school, to take AP classes in high school, to graduate from high school, and to enroll in college. As Margarita Blanco, who runs the Pathways to Teaching Program in Denver, said, "You can't be who you don't see." I wish I had had the opportunity to attend this conference. This research is important to all of us on the faculty here at Lone Star who teach courses designed for prospective teachers. Those courses include everything in our education departments, but also include our Mathematics for Teachers classes, which personally make up a significant portion of my own teaching load. Because of the demographic nature of our college, a large percentage, if not a majority, of the students in these education-focused classes are students of color, Hispanic, African-American, Asian, and others. Therefore, Lone Star and community colleges like us are essentially the front door to the process of developing a more diverse body of public school teachers for the future. Making sure that these students actually make it through the program and become successful teachers is profoundly important. Now, those of us that teach education courses or courses targeted for future educators make up a rather small percentage of all of the faculty at Lone Star College. But there is a larger message to take away from the research presented at this conference. The principle of "you can't be who you don't see" applies to far more than just teachers. Other research has shown that in low-income communities of color, children do not encounter in their daily lives doctors or lawyers or accountants or engineers who look like them. In fact, they may not even know what all of these people do. They cannot be who they do not see, and therefore they don't pursue these careers. The point I am making is that whether students of color are successful at Lone Star College impacts both the future of this generation of students and also the future of the generation that comes next. As part of this year's SACS accreditation process, Lone Star College is focusing on overcoming barriers to success among students from minority groups. Some of these barriers are starkly visible, others are far more subtle. Many of them are baked into a system of bias and exclusion that have been held in place for generations and to which we can become blind. To overcome these barriers, all of our students and all of our employees need to feel welcomed, engaged, supported, and included in tangible and equitable ways. In a few minutes, Dr. Carlesia Wright, Lone Star College's new Chief Diversity Officer, will be speaking about the college's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. This message is important, and it will be good for all of us to listen and take it to heart. The Union fully endorses this commitment, and our members are dedicated to participating in these efforts. Commitment to diversity is not an add-on or a side issue for Lone Star, whether one is talking about employees or students. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are at the heart of impacting the lives of generations of students and therefore must be at the very center of our attention because you can't be who you don't see. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you, John, so much. Extremely good concerns. Thank you. Anyone else, Desiree?
No, ma'am.
So Board, we have a, we had several different scheduling conflicts. So we would like to rearrange the order tonight and go to the consent agenda to make sure that we have a quorum on a number of the votes. And then we're going to come back. We'll get in the right order in just a minute and come back. And the workshops are going to be at the end. So we've got several different workshops. We have one on diversity. The redistricting will be after that, after we go through the consent agenda, and then the Faculty Senate will also present toward the end. But we want to make sure that we have a quorum tonight and go through the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chancellor. Before we move to the consent agenda, are there any special get-to-recognitions at the moment?
Yes, sorry. Jamie Swinerton, who is right, I couldn't tell you what, I can't see you with the mask on, but I knew you were back there someplace with the Houston Chronicle. And I say this a lot, but she's very, very accurate in her, when we do interviews, she always gets it right, and we appreciate the accurate information and really just the publicity that you give us. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
All right, Board members, let's move to the consent agenda. I know there's several items that we are going to review separately. And those are items one, three, four, 10, and 13. Are there any additional items that we are to review separately, members? All right, hearing done. May I have a motion in a second to adopt item two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, and 17?
To move.
May I have a second?
Second, Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved improperly second. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. May I have a motion in a second for item one?
Motion Sullivan.
Second, Ark, would you?
All right, it's been moved improperly second. Do we have any questions on item number one or comments?
Madam Chair, if I could, Board, we have a, I wanted to make a, we probably need an amendment to this. I need some legal opinion over this. This should, the Board Consent Agenda is correct where it says approval of Level One. When you review the Board, what's written, Level Two. And it's a technicality, but we would like to get it right with, Melissa, do we need an amendment to change?
I don't think you need an.
Just, go ahead.
You don't need an amendment because it is properly noticed, but I think if we want to be absolutely clear, we could state the full motion for the record.
Okay.
And that way it's correctly stated in the minutes.
And the reason, sometimes we delay these, but this is a program with Spring ISD. It's actually a non-credit program that we're offering for the time being. And so we would like to move this forward now. And our, once the Board approves this, knowing that it's a Level One, not a Level Two, as written in the, in your Board Agenda itself, then when we submit the paperwork to the coordinating board, it'll be, it'll be correct, so.
You need a motion?
Do you have, can I have a motion?
I'm happy to offer the motion, Sullivan.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Kane.
So, Madam Chair, for the record, the motion is to consider the approval to offer a new Lone Star College Barbering Level One certificate for Lone Star College North Harris.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so the motion is to consider of approval to offer a new Lone Star College Barbering Level One certificate for Lone Star College North Harris. All right, any comments, further comments? Those in favor of item one, as is, please vote aye.
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 Those opposed? Item passes. All right. So this is for item number three. So I, Chair Saldivar, move that the, that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.278 cents per 100 assessed valuations, which is effectively a 7.75% increase in the tax rate. This rate remains the same as the fiscal year 2021 INS tax rate. May I have a motion in a second?
That was the motion.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second, Sullivan.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. All right. Any comments or questions? Okay. So for this. Trust, members, can you please turn on your cameras for this particular vote, please?
Turn on.
And for any votes, I'm sorry. So if you can turn on your cameras, we would really appreciate this. Thank you. All right, so for this particular action item, I'm going to call a roll call. Just bear with me for one second.
Yes.
Okay. So Trustee Stoma.
Aye.
Trustee Pierce.
Aye.
Trustee Ayers Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Mario.
Aye.
Trustee Vote, he is absent. Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you very much. The item passes. All right, so now we're go to item number four. I, Chair Saldivar, move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.80 per 100 assessed valuations, which is effectively a 5.96% increase in the tax rate. This rate remains the same as fiscal year 2021 maintenance and operations tax rate. May I have a second?
Second, Sullivan.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions?
I have a comment, if I may, Chair.
Yes, please.
As Chancellor Head said earlier, the administration's brought this to us multiple times. So I think it'd be appropriate for us to thank Jennifer Mott, her team, and campus presidents, everybody that worked on these budgets and tax rates and all, everything that goes into it. It's a lot of work. And I, for one, want to thank them and acknowledge it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this particular item, I'll do the same as the third, which is a roll call. Trustee Stoma.
Yay.
Trustee Pierce.
Aye.
Trustee Ayers Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Mario.
Aye.
Trustee Vote is absent. Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. The item, action number four, passes. Thank you. Okay. So now we move to action item 10. May I have a motion in a second?
Motion Sullivan.
One moment, please. One moment.
On action item one, the Board did not approve the Associate's Degree. We want to make sure that North Harris gets its Associate's Degree. It approved the Level One certificate. But action item one is actually a Level One certificate and an Associate's Degree. And so we need a vote on the Associate's Degree as well.
So we'll need a motion to amend that item that was previously adopted?
May I make that motion, Chair?
You can go back and amend something after it's been voted on.
Okay.
So it's a motion to amend.
So let's have a motion to amend?
Motion to amend, Sullivan.
Thank you.
And so then let's restate the motion. Mario, where will we find that language so we can state the motion?
Yes, ma'am, so it would be in the actual action items. So it would be that the Board of Trustees approve offering a new barbering AAS degree and Level One certificate for the college beginning in the fall of 2022.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so let me read the correction. That the Board of Trustees approve offering a new bargaining AAS degree and Level One certificate for the college beginning in fall 2022. All right, perfect. May I have, all those in favor of item, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Item passes. Thank you. Going back to item number 10, may I have a motion in a second?
Motion Sullivan. Second, Sullivan.
Who was motion?
Stoma.
So it's been moved improperly second. Questions or comments, please?
Oh, this is Trustee Pierce, and I have a comment or I need some clarification. I just wanted an explanation of Lone Star contracts with LinkedIn. And I didn't realize it was a search engine for jobs. Is this the only thing that Lone Star is, I just need an explanation. We're not limiting our job searches to LinkedIn, are we? That's what I want to know.
Trustee Pierce, I'm going to ask Mario Castillo to come up. He is, HR reports to him, so he's got the background on, yeah, we recruit in different places, but I'll let him talk. Go ahead, Mario.
Yes, ma'am. So Trustee Pierce, we source in multiple publications, at least probably 15 to 20. And so this is really the means by which we actively source on LinkedIn. And so it's proprietary, and so that's why we have to go through them to use their platform.
Okay, because my concern was everybody's not on LinkedIn. You know, so can't limit and have, you know, and be, I want to say just, we can't just be, you know, endorsed by LinkedIn. And I know you're not just doing that, but I want to make sure, I want to clarify that we're not doing this. We're not just looking to LinkedIn to do our searches.
I can represent to you and the entire Board of Trustees that we have multiple sources from which we source individuals, and it is not just LinkedIn.
Let us, why don't we get a list? We have an extensive list. There's 15 or 20 of these places where we, I agree with you. Not everybody looks at social media and different papers. So we'll get you, get everybody a list and send it to the Board. We'll do that quickly, so. Good question, okay.
Any further comments? All right.
I do, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Trustee Wilson. Mario, could you please advise, is there a fee for LinkedIn? Or is there a fee for any job search engines that Lone Star is paying for? And if so, could you please, with the list, provide that fee?
Yes, ma'am. So yes, we pay for LinkedIn. We pay per account. So every recruiter gets an account, which is why we need this agenda item. And yes, ma'am, we do pay for publications. We also go in person to different fairs, and so there's fees for that. So yes, ma'am, I will amend and add a column to the list showing the expenditures associated with that item.
Mario, Mike Stoma, how, how many recruiters does the college have?
It ebbs and flows, but usually we have between four to six. Now, in full disclosure, during the pandemic, it was some of the positions that I cut because we had hiring freezes, and so it was one of the first departments that we cut. So we are now at about five, I believe. But we've been at about three for the last year, year and a half.
Well, you need to restaff those that you eliminated?
We have already began restaffing them, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further comments?
Yeah, the, Trustee Sullivan, if I may add, in the agenda backup, there's a dollar amount for the LinkedIn contract listed there.
The dollar amount?
Yeah, it's listed in the backup material. It's over $200,000.
It's $206,000.
Right there for us, right in front of us. But anyway, just want to say that. Thank you.
But it's not for the rest of them. This is why I.
Well, the only one on the agenda is LinkedIn. We'll look forward to receiving the additional agenda in the future, I mean, additional information.
Thank you, Board members. All those in favor of item number 10, please vote aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Item number 10 passes. So item number 13, may I have a motion in a second to consider the item separately?
Aye, for move.
Second, Sullivan.
All right, it's been moved improperly second. Questions or comments, please?
Okay, this is Trustee Pierce. I wanted some clarification. Now, my first question is, is the Clearly Zimmerman Engineer Firm next in line if something goes awry with Romero-Simons Engineering? Is that what, am I reading that correctly? Did I read that correctly?
One moment. We're calling Jennifer to answer that for you. And I'm sorry, if you could repeat your question, I couldn't catch.
What I asked was, is the Clearly Zimmerman Engineer Firm next in line if something goes awry with Romero-Simons Engineering? You know, if anything happens where they can't complete the job, is it the Clearly Zimmerman Engineering Firm that takes over? I think that's the way I read it.
That's correct.
But yes, at the point of contract negotiation. So if, if contract negotiations cease with the recommended firm, then we can move on to the next firm.
Okay, now, one of the question. The way this action item is written, that means that Zimmerman Engineer Firm simply steps in. Okay, does it require any Board approval, or is this, am I correct? They just step in. We don't get to know anything. In other words, we don't get to know what happened with Ramirez. You don't report back to us. You just put Zimmerman in. Is that correct?
Yes, if negotiations cease with Ramirez, if we can't get to an executed contract, then we would move on to begin negotiations with the second-ranked firm.
Okay, would that come back to the Board for approval?
No, that would not.
Okay, so, okay, it's not that I don't trust the administration. It's just that I want complete, as complete transparency as I can get with dealing with contracts and procurement. All right, and that's why I'm going to have to vote nay on this. And that's why I'm going to have to vote nay on this, because I do want to know if Ramirez Firm doesn't, if something goes, you know, I don't know, awry or whatever, I'd like to know what it is and why the contract was canceled. That's my drawback here.
Jennifer, that we can look in the future?
Yeah, we would do that. We can do that. We can make that as a matter of practice, yeah.
Okay. Any additional comments on this particular action item?
Jennifer, it's Mike Stoma. What would be some reasons, just briefly, that Ramirez would not, you would cease to negotiate with Ramirez?
I mean, I'm certainly not going to speak for Ramirez specifically, but in general, when we get into contract negotiations, we get into the terms of the contract, which is something probably OGC can speak more specifically to. But sometimes there's disagreements about indemnity clauses, termination provisions, and if we can't get to a full agreement on all terms of the contract, that might be an instance where we have to say we can't come to an agreement and need to move on to negotiate with somebody else.
We've done that, we've done that on occasion where either the money is not right or they want more money or there's, there's conditions or they can't meet our timeline or they don't have enough staff. We just move to the next one. I mean, that's, that's what you're basically approving here, which is what it says in the document, that we'll move on to the next one if we can't come to an agreement according to this board agenda item. So it happens periodically, not a lot, but it saves us having to come back and redo everything and extend another couple of months onto our dealings. But we certainly can. If things don't work out, we can certainly let you know what the issue is. So.
That's the college, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to walk over you. Has the college done business with Ramirez in the past?
I don't know. I don't, I don't, I have no knowledge of that firm. Jennifer, I don't know.
Jennifer, do you know?
Not off the top of my head. I want to say I believe so, but I would like to check and report back.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. And I think this is something that we could probably look into it, like in the future?
Yeah, I mean, in general, each time, we can definitely make that a common practice where if the top-ranked firm, if negotiations do cease, we can make sure we send it to the board.
Perfect. Thank you. Any further comments? All those in favor of item number 13, please vote aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay. This is Trustee Pierce. I'm not comfortable with this. You say you're going to come back to us, but it's not written, so I'm not comfortable with that. I want to know for sure that you will come back to the board and say, we're not contracting with this group anymore, we're going to the next one.
Trustee Pierce, so we're going to have to do a roll call on this particular action item because there's yays and nays on this particular one. Advice, Melissa advised me to do that. So let me do a roll call real quick. So this is for action item number 13. Trustee Stoma.
Yay.
Trustee Pierce.
No.
Trustee Ayers Wilson.
Abstained.
Trustee Murillo. Trustee Murillo.
Aye. Aye. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Trustee vote is not available. Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay. And Trustee Kane?
Aye.
And myself, yes. All right. So motion passes.
Yay.
Thank you. All right, so I think we're done, right? All right, so the consent agenda, thank you so much, members, for assisting me with this. So now we're going to go back to, we're going to go back to the workshop. So are there any presentations?
So we're going to have Carlicia Wright come up and I've asked her to bring to board an update or provide an update on where we are, what she's seeing, and give you the opportunity to ask a few questions. She's still, we're making a lot of progress, I think, in terms of talking with people and we're getting ready to hire a number of people at the colleges. But I'm going to let you, let her go through the report, so.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Good evening, Madam Chair and esteemed Board members. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide an update. So as you all remember, back in February, I think March, I did greetings at your Board of Trustees meeting. And so it's been about seven, eight months that I've been with Lone Star College. And I've spent the, the first few months, I spent the first few months of my tenure really focused on listening. Really focused on listening to various stakeholders. And so in my first 90 days, I met with over 100 individuals and stakeholders and groups within Lone Star College to really get an understanding of where we were. And I, and I tell you that what I learned in that time is that Lone Star College has a really rich history as it relates to diversity, equity, inclusion. And it started way before my tenure here at Lone Star College. And so as I listened to the feedback from various individuals and organizations, so faculty senate, I met with the, the presidents of the campuses, I met with different departments and divisions, individuals reached out to me. What I found is that Lone Star College really just needed a system-wide approach to addressing diversity, equity, inclusion. And so my office, which has stood up under Chancellor Head, the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, our priorities are to work with the administration and presidents, support recruitment and retention efforts, develop systems of reporting and performance management, and work with faculty and the administration on establishing equity-minded practices and creating an inclusive excellence center for students. And so, as I shared, Lone Star College has a rich history of diversity, equity, and inclusion through various initiatives over the years. Some of what I looked at, in addition to listening to the stakeholders, has looked at various data points. And so I'm going to go through some of the data and how it will steer the work that I'll be doing at, as the Chief Diversity Officer, as your Chief Diversity Officer. So the first thing I looked at is the community, our service areas. And so as you can see, over the last decade, our community, just like the region, has become more and more diverse, where ethnic diversity has increased, specifically in Hispanics. And so while at the same time, you also see that whites are declining in our region and in our, in our service area. And so what, what I found is, when I took this data and I looked at student data, similarities. And so similar to the service areas, demographics changing, whites declining, Hispanics increasing, blacks remaining relatively the same, I also found that that was the case for our student demographics. And so here, I look back at the, the beginning of fall 2012, where white, white was the predominant demographic within our service area or within our student population, and it's declined over time, actually more rapidly than our service area demographics. And Hispanic, our Hispanic student population has increased dramatically, surpassing that of our service area. And so this is really important to note, as we look at diversity, equity, inclusion, you heard earlier from Professor Bergoff, where he talked about what's happening in higher education as it relates to diversity, equity, inclusion, is to understand our student profile with a student focus. And so similar to what I shared in the previous slide, where the student demographics have changed, our profile, our student profile has also changed. So in, in the fall of 2011, we had, our typical student was a white female under age 24. And you look at now, our typical, our typical student is a Hispanic female, about 43% of our student population under 24. And so there has been a tremendous shift. And with that, we have to be very cognizant. And so as you all know, I'm sure as we've received funding from the Department of Education, Lone Star College is considered a minority-serving institution, one of the largest in the state of Texas, and a Hispanic-serving institution, the largest in the nation. And so if you look at the demographics broken out by all of our campuses, you'll see for the most part, most of our campuses, the leading demographic is Hispanic students, with exception to Montgomery. And Tomball is, it's, it's neck and neck with white students and Hispanic students. And so we're seeing that every campus, in, in every campus, we've got a tremendous amount of diversity that exists. And so as we, as we, as we look at our, our service area and we look at our student demographics, we're also looking at, you know, the foundation of who we are as Lone Star College. Our core value is to create an environment that's inclusive, an environment that is equity-minded. And so my, my office and my team, which as Dr. Head said, I'll be hiring diversity managers at each of the campuses, will work, work to support that work. And so we've also looked at the employee demographics. And so similar to what you saw with students in the service area, there have been some shifts. It's not been as dramatic as what we've seen in our service area in terms of demographics, but over time, we've had gradual changes within our employee demographics. Whereas 10 years ago, the, the white employee demographic was over 60%. It's down by 50% with increases in, in essentially every ethnic diversity area. So it's not included on any of the slides or other in folks that had multi-ethnicity. And so we just focused on the, the largest percentages. And so all told, our total headcount is September 15th, was 6,646 employees. And as you provided a breakdown, and in addition, there are appendices that has further details, breakdown on the student demographics, as well as other data that might be helpful for the board. But essentially, we've got a diverse makeup. And so one of the things that my office is looking at, and one of the functions that we, we've taken over from OGAC, is the equity analytics reporting. And so we'll be looking at and sharing this information with the administration, the campus presidents, and providing campus snapshots so that our presidents are aware of what's happening, the administration is aware of what we're doing. And we'll be supporting, as I said earlier, one of our priorities is recruitment, supporting the efforts of recruitment so that we can continue to increase diversity, to mirror as close as possible over time our student demographics. And so, I mean, you know, one of our primary goals is, is to pursue, you know, workforce at all levels that is diverse. And as you heard from Professor Bergoff earlier, research shows that diversity increases student achievement. It also increases retention for students and some of our employees, and it reduces the impact of implicit bias. And so it's really important for us to continue to hold this front and center. So we've organized our work, not just around recruitment, but supporting the culture here at Lone Star College. And so we've implemented a variety of initiatives. We, we started student forums at the top of the fall, where students are really sharing what they're interested in learning about as it relates to diversity. We're working on the accreditation process that Dr. Bergoff mentioned, creating a foundations of equity, learning certification for our faculty that really supports driving student success, particularly for our diverse student population, where we've had, we've seen that there have been some disparities in their achievement. And creating equity practices, supporting the community. And so one of the things that we hope that you will all participate in the spring, we'll be hosting a Black and Brown Men Summit, targeting high school juniors and seniors, as well as our existing Lone Star College students, and then constantly looking for ways for us to be more and more transparent about what's happening. And so that's what we've organized our work around, and I look forward to any feedback that you all might have. So that concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Amen.
Go ahead.
Yes, please.
This is Trustee Pierce. I have a question from Ms. Wright. Is that okay?
That's fine, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Wright, I know you were giving comparative studies and I think, did you go back to 2012? Where did you go back to when you start talking about the student percentage? Was this 2012? I was trying to write, but I was writing too fast. I don't know what I wrote. You compared 2012 to 2021, is that correct?
Yeah, so I, so I looked at 10 years of, of data.
Okay, 10 years, okay, 2011. Now, this is what I want to know, and I don't know if you have that offhand, you may have to get this, and I know you were talking about leadership as far as, you know, diversity. I would like to see a comparison from 2012 of African-American women. And when I say leadership, I mean vice chancellors and presidents of colleges, and compare today. I know we don't have any today, so I can tell you that's zero. There are no, you know, African-American female vice chancellors or presidents at Lone Star. But I want you to go back to 2012. Were there any in 2012? You may not know that, because I know you're new, but that might be something you have to get. So I want to see where we fell from 2012 to where we are now. And you may not be able to tell me why, but you know, there's always a reason behind it. But I know that much, there, there has been a decrease, and I'm talking about African-American women, not African-American men, now we're talking about African-American women. And I have one, one other question for you. I know that the majority of Hispanic students are female. What are the majority of, are the majority of the black students also female?
Yes, so our average student in general are female, yes. And so that, that will go across the demographics.
And like John said, what you can't see, you can't be. I like that comment. Thank you, that's all I wanted. If you could get that for me, if you don't know it offhand, that's fine, but feel free to email me those stats. Or really, you can email it to the entire board. I look forward to, I look forward to seeing that.
Okay. I, I will follow up and make sure that you have that data.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
This is Michael Stoma. Could you go back to your slide?
Which slide?
Which slide? Trustee Stone.
Yeah. What did you say? When I look at this slide, is the imbalance going to?
Trustee Stone, I think here, the connection is coming and going. Can you please ask the question again?
Is that any better?
A little better.
I don't want.
Let me sit back and talk softly. That's not for me. What concerns me when I look at this is the number of white adjunct faculty and the number of white faculty as compared to the other categories. I know this has happened over time. I mean, and I think you have a challenge here, and you know you have a challenge. I'm going to tell you about history. Back in, it's 1991, '91, '92, when I was working with the House Representatives and Sandy Schubert, who was the president of North Harris Campus at the time, by the way, and the East Point Chamber Comic, we actually collaborated in a study which showed the trends of aspects continuing into what it is now. And also, minorities. Geez, you know, I just wish we could be coloredblind. I just wish we could, we didn't have to look at this. We can just judge people on their, strictly their character. But we don't. And your job is, is a tough job. I just want to point this out, because this is a big deal. And you have my support. I want to be clear, you have my support in whatever you need to do to, let's say, level these categories over time. And I would like to see a plan of how you intend to do it at some point. You know, you can go back and jump your hoops to get your plan. I'm sure Chancellor Head wants to see it too. The rest I would say, but we, we have to somehow equalize this in a very purposeful way and intended way over a period of time to reach a balanced diversity, matches our student body. I mean, I'm not, I'm not here in Cyprus. I mean, I can see this being a growth here tremendously. I mean, I feel like I'm in, you know, South San Antonio, but I was like, but the point is, is that we, we have to be more diligent and see this as a, see this with a sense of urgency. So I would, I would encourage you and the other board members, members and the chancellor, to put whatever resources that Dr. Wilson asks for, you know, within reason and justified, to let her do her job so we can, we can serve the people that we represent. So you have my support, ma'am, and good luck, seriously, good luck and wishes on this one.
Trustee Stone, we, I mean, we agree with you. On the adjuncts, I want to point out that that's probably our best percentages. When you look at that, we, we think that's our future pool. We've been talking to the presidents about taking a look at the adjunct pool because it's very diverse compared to, or better than what we have in the full-time faculty. So we agree. And so thank you for your support.
Any further comments?
Yes, ma'am. Mike Solomon.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, good job, good presentation, good information for us. And I'd like to ask just a really pretty simple question. On the slide that's up right now, could you define what part-time staff is? I mean, I can look at staff and what that is. I know what faculty is, I know what administrator is, know what an adjunct is, but I don't know what part-time includes since nearly 20% of the workforce, so I'm interested.
So part-time is a mixture of a variety of different functions. So it could be student services, so advisor, there could be part-time advisors for programs and tutors. Part-time can also be some of the work that supports our operations and our facilities as well.
So they, trustee Sullivan, normally they would be working, Mario, I'm looking at you, less than 20 hours a month? Or 20 hours a week, sorry, 20 hours a week. That's how we would classify them as part-time. So we have a lot of people that might come in on the weekends or at night or a part-time advisor, a part-time counselor, something like that, or counselors would be staff. But, but you, so does that help?
It does. Yes, sir. Yeah, sure does. And then I have a, a follow-up to the discussion that's been had so far. And I'm going to cut, hope I don't catch you flat-footed on this, Dr. Head. But I think I remember when I first joined the board that there was quite a bit of discussion about the efforts that the administration had undertaken to increase diversity throughout the organization at every level. Could you touch on that? Because I think it's been lost.
Yes, so since I've been the chancellor, about half the faculty that we've hired have either been Hispanic or black. So I'm, and Mario, I'm looking at you. I think we probably need to come back and give you a report over the progress that's been made. It's slow, it's steady. We probably have been changing the numbers about a percentage point every year. So you remember when we had a retreat a couple of years ago, we were talking about over a five, 10-year period, what kind of changes we would be seeing. We're moving in that direction. It's just, I mean, a couple of things have slowed us down, including COVID, I might add. We, with our delays in hiring, or actually, we just froze hiring. So I think you'll see some more changes as we, as we go forth in the next couple of years, so.
Good. Thank, thank you for the recap and the reminder. We appreciate it. I think it's going to show up as well in, in time.
We're welcome to back with a report and show you what, which categories we've seen improvements.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Head. Thank you, Chair.
Any further comments?
So before we leave, ma'am, I just want to make a brief comment. And I think we can all agree that it's, you know, it's important for the system to re, to reflect what the current demographics and future demographics that we going to have here in, in the college. So I thank you very much for the work that you're going to do. We really appreciate your work and we really appreciate everyone here at the college for working extremely hard to make it happen. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If we could go to the redistricting process. Presentation.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn this over to Melissa to introduce two of the attorneys that work with her at Thompson and Horton to give an overview of exactly what would occur with the redistricting process. I know we've got more work to do, but I wanted her to do this tonight. And I sent you the note about Lisa McBride having conflicts, but these, these two attorneys work with Lisa also. So Melissa, I'm going to turn it over to you for introductions and generally what we're talking about here.
Okay. Yeah, as Chancellor had said, we've got two associates with our firm who work closely with Lisa McBride on the redistricting process. I know you all, I guess Lisa came and spoke with you all in December about this process. So Lisa and Annie are here to provide some more information and answer any questions that you might have. So I will just turn this over to them. They've both joined us via Zoom.
Thanks, Melissa. Hey, everybody. My name's Ashley Wright. I think that Annie may be having a little difficulty with her video, so she may not show.
Yeah, Ashley, it's, it says the host has turned off my video, but I'm, I'm here. I would love to be on video. But either way, I'm still here.
Hold on just a minute. Lynn, can we get her video? Get her on the?
Yes, we're working on it, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and at least give a little introduction of myself and hopefully by some, I pass it over to Annie. Maybe you guys can see her face. But yeah, I'm an associate in the Dallas office for Thompson and Horton. I joined the firm in 2019. And I have been doing work related to transactional work, business-related issues, do a lot of governance work for our clients. So policy development, open records of the meeting issues, unemployment issues. And lately I've been doing a lot of election-related work. Last year I had the great opportunity to be able to work on the legal team that defended Dallas Community College District, which is now Dallas College, in their bond election contest. And now I am helping out Lisa McBride with our clients who are going through the redistricting process. And so I will pass it over to Annie now because now you guys can see her and she can introduce herself.
Hi, thanks, Ashley. My name is Annie Stein. I have been with this firm since they opened their doors in 2009. And I've, I've left and come back, you know, to, to do some other things with my family. But I've been back working on Title IX litigation. And I actually do a lot of work with the firm's special education practice, so defending our school districts and, and helping advise them navigate the, the complicated world of special education law. And I am, as, you know, we have the, the 2020 census data and a lot of our clients are gearing up for redistricting. I, I kind of threw my hat in to get involved in this process. So I'm, I'm happy, happy to be here and, and learn from Lisa and Ashley and, and work on these important issues.
So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and get started. I know that you guys have already heard, I'm sure, a stellar presentation from Lisa McBride about redistricting as a whole. And I know she's, she's already walked you guys through the steps as far as that's concerned. And so what we're going to focus on today is the demographers' role in the redistricting process. I think it's interesting that demographics was mentioned in the last presentation that we just heard. Because it, and it's very relevant, especially as it pertains to redistricting. And so the first thing we're going to talk about is just generally what a demographer is, what demography is, and how that, how demography plays a role in redistricting. So I'm going to talk about that and then I will pass it over to Annie. And she's going to go more into specifics about some Texas demographers that we know are experienced in redistricting. So generally speaking, demography is the statistical study of human populations. And it examines the size, structure, and movements of population over space and time. So demography is obviously useful for governments and colleges and private businesses because it's a way to analyze and predict social, cultural, and economic trends related to population. And so the demographer's role in demography is to be that information gatherer or that data gatherer. And so the way that the, the way that the demographer gathers this data is through typically the government census. But they also use government registries such as birth and death registries. And they also gather data indirectly. So they'll use surveys of smaller groups of populations. And then using these samples from the population, they can examine things using statistical models. And then that's how they draw conclusions about the whole population. Of course, with the presumption that they're using statistically significant examples. All right, we can go into the next slide. I'm, I'm going to give a quick little reminder about what redistricting is because December was a few, a few months away. So I'll just give a quick little reminder about that before I talk about this table. So as a reminder, redistricting has to do with a population both growing and shifting over time. So in our democracy, the idea is that every person has or should have reasonably close to equal representation. And so when we draw representative districts, the idea is that each of these districts should have about the same number of people in it. However, naturally, over time, we could see that one area of a jurisdiction may be growing at a rapid rate. And then another area may be losing population. So the point of redistricting is to redraw the districts in a way that even outs the population within those districts so that they can, so they're relatively comparable. And so looking at this table, there's, there's various players when it comes to the redistricting process. And the, a typical redistricting team is going to consist of both attorneys and demographers. So the attorneys are going to be the ones who are keeping the board in line when it comes to the timeline, the process, the legal requirements. They'll be the ones who will meet with the board about the 2020 census data and explain the legal importance of population changes. And of course, they're going to be the ones who will review whatever proposed maps are brought up. And of course, the final map, just to ensure that those maps are in compliance with state and federal law. And then they're going to be the ones to keep the board on track when it comes to being in compliance with the timeline. And so just as a reminder to, to, to you all, the Lone Star College Board of Trustees, it's my understanding that your election is next November, so November 8th of 2022. So that would mean that your redistricting must be completed 90 days prior to that date. So that would be August 10th of 2022. And so the demographer's role when it comes to the redistricting process is to analyze the data. They're going to be the ones to help you analyze your existing single-member districts. And they'll be the ones to help you, they'll be the ones who will provide you with estimates on a county precinct level. The demographer will download the 2020 census data. And what they do is they create shape files. And they organize, which is, which means that they're organizing this data based on the census tract and block by block grouping. And then they will present this, these population changes to the board. And then the board can use that data to answer those questions about, you know, what's important when it comes to redistricting, which is you're going to ask yourself, are my single-member districts well-balanced? Has there been a retrogression since the last census? Do my single-member districts comply with traditional redistricting principles? And your attorneys are going to be there to help you sort of answer those questions. But the demographer is the one who helps you digest that data. And then the demographer, of course, is the one who draws the proposed plans. And they're going to draw those plans based on whatever redistricting criteria you, as the board, adopt. And so that's just some background on what demographers do and their role in the redistricting process. I'm going to turn it over to Annie so she can just talk more specifically about some Texas demographers that we know are experienced in the redistricting process.
Thanks, Ashley. I think, I think I have the, the easier part here. Except if you, you wouldn't believe, because I'm, we're presenting about six demographers here. And if you probably wouldn't believe me that I've been working, I guess, for at least a month on trying to gather interested and available demographers from across the state because it's just an incredibly busy time for these folks. And they have such a, you know, such expertise in this area. And they're in high, high demand for school districts and community colleges across the state. So I think one thing we have to consider, just a broad thing, is whether the demographer has the necessary software, the GIS software to do the redistricting or whether, you know, we need to incorporate that into the cost of hiring some. I think I'll go through everybody, but I think all but one on this list, you know, comes with that software. So that is a plus. And everybody on this list is available and interested in, in doing this work with a caveat that most of them are not available today. They'll be available in the next, the next couple of months, towards the end of the year. So Brent Alexander is in Dallas with Ashley. And he doesn't have as much experience, I believe, with actual redistricting and drawing, drawing the maps. But he certainly is, you know, at a firm that represents many ISDs and has done a lot of enrollment forecast type work. And, and so we would recommend reaching out to him. The, the second person, Rocky Gardner, actually, he's very highly recommended. The other folks on this list, in fact, recommend Rocky when they're not available. So that's always a good sign. And as you can see, he just has a, a ton of experience with ISDs and has all of his, the software necessary to do this work. And is also available closer toward the end of the year. The next, the next person is Dennis Harner. And he's in Austin and has been doing this for decades and is also available with, with the software, as you can see. And we've worked with him. I think, Ashley, you've worked with him as well.
I have not. I've, I've worked with Rocky, but not.
You've worked with Rocky, yeah. The next, the next two folks, or no, excuse me. Then, so there's two professors from Rice. And I should disclose, as, as Lisa McBride asked me to do, that one of them is related to me. So, but I, but Dr. Stein and Dr. Alford, they, they work together often. And Dr. Alford, John Alford at Rice, is pretty well-known for, for testifying as an expert witness in redistricting litigation. And, and Dr. Stein does more of the, you know, actual drawing of the maps. Both of them, as you can see, have been doing this for decades and have ample experience representing community colleges specifically and, and ISDs. And then, and then finally, he's, I sort of went out of order and I apologize for that, but I, I needed to put the two professors at Rice together. Jerry Wood is someone who comes highly recommended as well. I do not believe that he has the access to the software. So we have to, we have to factor that into our cost. But he's represented, he's worked for the city for, for several decades and is retired. And he drew, you know, he worked, as you can see, he worked for the city, for the county. He worked as a, he, he helped with, in litigation after the 2010 redistricting with the county. So he is also recommended and is also available. And I think that's it. If anybody has any questions, or Ashley, if there's anything I forgot.
This is trustee Stone. I have a few questions, if you don't mind.
Yes, trustee.
Demographers that you've presented here, do you have a, one you're leaning toward? Does your firm have one that, that, for firm?
So the firm, as Ashley indicated, the firm has worked with, I think, almost everyone on the list in some capacity except for Jerry Wood. And so I think we did not include anybody that we wouldn't recommend. Jerry Wood is recommended by another attorney that was very well-respected by our, by Lisa McBride. So I, there's nobody on this list that, and I, I apologize, I misspoke. Brent Alexander is someone that we have not worked with. But based on his resume and availability, we, we wanted to include him because, you know, because as I mentioned, we are dealing with very busy demographers. We wanted to have one more option. But everybody else on this list is either someone we have worked with at the firm or, like I said, becomes highly recommended by other attorneys that we work with occasionally.
From my understanding, I certainly don't, don't know the details. So I could be wrong here and I welcome correction. That the nature of the agreement between Lone Star College System and your firm will be.
That the nature of the agreement between Lone Star College System and your firm will be that your firm will furnish the demographer to do this work. So really, it becomes your decision, the firm's decision as to which demographer you will use. I mean, we, we may look at this and say, gee, we may like this or that one. But when it comes down to it, your, your firm will choose the one to do the work. Is that correct?
I'm waiting for Ashley to speak, but that is my understanding.
Yeah, I'm not as privy to the actual, the, the content of the agreement. But I do believe that that, that is accurate. But Melissa, anything otherwise?
Fair enough. I mean, at some point, though, you guys are going to say, this is, this is the person we want to work with. And that's, you know, I just wanted to know if you've reached that decision yet.
No, it's my understanding, if I could jump in, this is Melissa, trustee Stoma, that Lisa presents the options, gets some feedback from the board, makes some recommendations. So I think this is sort of the early stage of that process. And if the board has some feedback or some thoughts, we would certainly welcome those and take those into consideration.
Yeah, okay, that's fair. One other, one other question, and you have to forgive me, I'm kind of a technical nerd in a lot of ways. I've dealt with GIS systems and mapped and I got mapped well fields, or well fields. So I assume when.
The nest then.
Yeah. So I assume whenever the demographer does their work, loads their data into whatever the tools they have, the GIS tools and, and art graphing tools and such, they'll be able to visually show this board the as-is situation based on the data, correct? And then if it, you know, how that stacks up with the, with the current law. In other words, we have, we have to meet certain law. We, you know, our, our districts have to, are governed by the law and the criteria there, which, you know, I'm not going into. But the point is, is that's, that's the as-is. If indeed, the as-is meets the criteria of the law, then there wouldn't, you know, I, I'm just thinking, there wouldn't be any need for redistricting. If indeed, it shows, but indeed, if it shows a shift, whatever the shifts are, then the demographer will, will probably, will first do some scenarios as to where boundaries could be moved. And those would be graphically shown to the board. Would that be a correct assumption?
Yeah, that's correct. So, so what's going to, what, what, what would happen is the demographer looks at the current data for Lone Star Colleges, you know, districts. And the, the key number or the key differential is 10%. So if the district with the highest population compared to the district with the lowest population, if that differential between those two districts is more than 10%, then that means that.
Right. And all I'm asking is, we as a board will be able to see that graphically versus having to read data tables, which is painful, right? Yeah.
So, so that's, that's an important thing. I mean, the, it, it depends on the demographer and what software they're utilizing. But for the most part, what they, they typically can pull up the GIS software and sort of show you in real time with the various layers, depending on, you know, what you want to see. Like if you want to see all of the county precinct lines in, as well as, you know, I'm thinking more like if the school district, maybe they want to also see the feeder, feeder patterns as well on there. So that, that's all stuff that you would be able to see in real time. Yes. I'm sorry.
We should be able to do that, right?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, most of the software that demographers use allows for that.
Okay. That's all.
So, A-actually, just from, uh, this is Steve Hadd, the chancellor. Would we, we'll probably have an extensive meeting or retreat or something, right? Where the demographer would come in, not just, and do a lengthy, I mean, this would be a major discussion, right? Or I just want to make sure everybody's clear about the actual process itself. And one of the, and I, and I know I talked to Lisa about this, about how this is going to, the, the actual process. And what you gave is good, I think, because not everybody understands exactly what the demographer does and, and how they're going to present the information. So at the end of the day, the board, that, all this is going to be presented to the board. And then they have discussions and they approve it or not approve it, correct? Is that what, how's this, what happens at the end? What's the actual process and approval process? And this is going to be, just so I'm clear on the timeline, so we need to have this done in, in June, let's see, that'd be July, August?
Yeah, it's August 10th. It's, is the, the latest possible date in which, you know.
It needs to be approved by the board in August. Is that correct? So backing that up.
Prior to that, just no, no later than August 10th.
For the person, from today, there's six or seven months that the demographer has to work on this and come in and.
And, and, and chancellor, the, the demographer is going, is absolutely going to need the board's feedback, right? So a lot of the process is going to consist of one-on-one, possibly one-on-one meetings with the demographer and trustees, workshops, public workshops, in which the, the demographer would present, demographer and the, the legal team would present proposed maps and get the trustees' feedback, as well as the community feedback on these maps. So that's essential.
One last question, just, I mean, the only role of us right now, or me, is just to facilitate the thing. But so you've got a number of people that live out of, out of town, just part of your demographers. I, I think we would be expecting them, right, to be available to us on a, some kind of regular schedule where the board could meet with them if they wanted to, right? Not on Zoom. I'm talking about in-person, so they can ask questions and look at maps, like real maps.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's definitely something to consider, you know, as far as availability of the demographers and just distance, you know, travel time to get to all, if you are looking to have in-person meetings. I've, I've, you know, been doing this redistricting for a couple of months and, you know, it definitely consists of lots of meetings. Some of them are going to have to be virtual, I think, just because of how in-demand the demographers are and sort of the, the lack of, you know, people that are going to be experiencing this, that you want to be assisting you with this. So keeping that in mind, I do think that there, there may be times where virtual is going to be the, the best option. And to be honest, there, sometimes the virtual option is better just because it allows for them to be able to share their screen and pull up their software and just very easily just sort of navigate through there and allow you to be able to, to, to play with moving a line and seeing like what that does to the population shift.
One last question from an operational standpoint. So what's the role of Thompson and Horton all through this and the relationship with a demographer and, and the board? Are you the, I mean, how does that, how does that work from a practical standpoint?
Annie, did you want to answer? I saw your, if you wanted to.
Well, I was, I mean, I think we're the, I don't know, like Ashley indicated, I'm not sure. We're not privy to the actual contractual agreement. I think, as we said, we would be hiring the demographer on your behalf. But I mean, I think as far as, you know, like as Ashley indicated, the demographer is the expert in analyzing the data and drawing the maps. But then there are the legal implications of, of redistricting, of course, would be handled by the law firm. So, you know, in other words, you, demographer could draw, you know, nine districts. But we would have to make sure that they're all in compliance with, with all the various, with laws. So that, that's where our, that's where we would come in.
That's helpful in terms of our scheduling and our thinking, just to make sure everybody knows that if they want to be involved, there's a great opportunity to be involved, but there's a lot of involvement if they choose to. So, okay.
Ashley, I do have a question. So with the demographer, typically, and you might have already answered this, but typically, how long would it take since first meeting with us and then doing all the maps and graphs until their finally complete version? Like, how long typically does that take?
I think it just depends on, one, the availability of the demographer. Two, what the board decides to adopt as far as their timeline. You know, it's up to the board as to what, what they want to do. They may want to have various, for example, one of the districts that I'm working with right now is having numerous community meetings every month. In addition to that, they're doing one-on-one meetings with just the demographer and the attorneys and that trustee. And then in addition, they're having a call board meeting, which is like a workshop, as well as just the general board meeting. And so there's a lot of meetings that are happening. And they've sort of, you know, in that scenario, they've, they've set out deadlines in which they want the demographer to present a certain number of maps to them so that they can digest those maps and whittle it down to maybe one or two maps that they then review and get feedback from the community. And then it comes to the board again. And then it's all about sort of whittling it down to that final map, right? So it's sort of just what does the board want? How, how involved do they want to have the community be a part of this? And, you know, that, that plays a role when it comes to how quickly the demographer can produce a map.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add on?
Can I jump in, please? Or at least put me in line. I can't tell who's, who's talking and who's in line.
So we have three trustees. Can we have trustee Sullivan? Can you wait for just a second? We have.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You've shown us five very qualified demographers. What criteria will you use to get from the five to the one that you, that you select? What are three to five key criteria that you will use?
You want to answer, Annie?
I was going to leave that to you. Well, I was gonna just, real quickly, going back to the previous question about the timeline. I think when Lisa McBride, when she presented to the redistricting committee, she, she sort of proposed a December to April timeline to go through, to meet maybe four to six times with the board and, and consider various plans. So that was just, I, I saw that in the, one of her slides. But I think for the, as far as a criteria, since I, since we only have included people that we vetted and trust and want to work with, I quite, I frankly think availability will be a key factor. So, you know, depending on how soon the board can convene and establish your priorities and your criteria for, you know, what we want to do, what you want to do with, with redistricting, then as soon as we have that piece, we can, you know, hire the demographer and get to work. I think that another criteria will be what kind of software and data, or excuse me, what kind of software availability that everyone has. And, and we need to nail that down a little bit. And then, Ashley, can you think of a third criteria?
Yeah, I mean, I think if it, if availability becomes an issue, because it sounds like you guys may want in-person meetings, then I would probably look at just distance. And, you know, that may rule out some, some, some of the demographers on the list.
And certainly, I think because of some of the trustees' experience and service and other entities, you've had experience with these, some of these demographers. So we were hoping for, certainly hoping to get input from, from, from this, from these members on who they would want to work with and who they might be comfortable working with.
Any further questions, trustee Kane?
Just a follow-up. Would their history of working with community colleges be a factor?
I mean, I think that it's certainly helpful if they've worked with community, I mean, or maybe just had experience with colleges in general. I don't know necessarily if it's just with community colleges. But I think that's helpful. But I don't, I certainly don't think that that would be a deal breaker if a, if a demographer didn't have that experience. Just because it's, it's more just about, you know, how much experience do they have with just analyzing population data?
Thank you.
Trustee Sullivan?
I'm sorry, I, I did not mean to try to jump over anyone. Has everyone else spoken that's going to? Okay, with that silence, I'll, I'll jump in and offer some comments. It's a little uncomfortable for me to say this publicly and you never want to say anything bad about anyone and I apologize. But I, I have objections to Bob Stein. And he, he goes to a number of highly public issues involving voting centers, redistricting, how he believes things should be drawn. And I have viewed those comments as preconceived. And I think front-loaded that that would be a strong objection for me. With respect to Jerry Wood, I worked with Jerry. I was chair of the city's redistricting committee under Mayor Parker. And, and I hope that my positive comments about Jerry do not hurt his chances of being hired by Lone Star or Thompson and Horton. But Jerry was in the planning department at the city for decades. And he worked under multiple mayors. He has experience with redistricting. He's very smart and he is politically 180 degrees from me. So there's nothing there below the surface that anybody needs to worry about. I can just tell you as a professional, Jerry Wood was recommended by Parker to do the redistricting process. And he did it and then he retired. Very positive work. He worked with right-leaning elected officials and left-leaning elected officials. And he navigated it all very well. We all respected his work product. So that's all I want to say. And once again, my apologies for taking a shot at, at Stein. But if, if I don't say something, then my silence could be construed as, as supporting it. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Any other further questions? All right, here and done. Thank you, Ashley, so much. Annie, that's really perfect. Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, so if we can move to the approval of the minutes of the September 9th, 2021 workshop and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion in a second to approve the meetings? Second? May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's being moved improperly second. All those in favor, please vote with the usual aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Do we have any special reports and announcements?
Yeah, I'll make my comments short. Just to give you a couple of updates. So a reminder to the board that we have the accreditation visit coming up the week of October the 25th. Some of you will be involved in that. And that is, this is a major, major, major undertaking for us. And so you'll receive some more, I think we're sending them out, just so you can have some more documents. We've prepared, I think, totally about 500 pages, maybe more than that, of documentation. And this is our 10-year accreditation. This determines whether or not we receive federal aid. We'll do well. I'm not, I'm not concerned about it because of all the work that's gone into it, but it is a major issue with us. So just quickly on where we are, Jennifer is going to talk a little bit more about COVID in just a minute. But just, just a high-level overview, we've given aid to 60,000 students. We've given out about 70 million. We're planning on giving out a total of about 160 million. And we will have more detailed reports. Keep in mind that we didn't make the awards. We had to wait until official day. So this week, we're giving out awards. So we'll have more detailed information for the board at the November board meeting. But that's all moving as it should. And keep in mind, on top of that, we're giving out, every semester, we give out about 30,000 Pell Grants to students. So we're giving out a lot of money right now. I would like to acknowledge that, two things that you've received information about, but since Jamie's still here. Link, can you go to the next slide? The great college to work for? So I just want to make sure, I know you're aware of this, but I don't think we shared the 10 categories and why we were chosen. And keep in mind that the student, uh, employees chose this. So, and I'm, you know, if I look at a couple of different things, I'm really looking at job satisfaction and support and just the way they feel about things in general, especially since we've been through 18-plus months of COVID. This is important to me that we all stick together throughout all this. And we're, I mean, uh, most of the colleges that we've been talking to, I said, in Austin this Monday, most of the colleges in the state of Texas had a, about a 10% decline. That's been the average. And, um, just head count. And we were down less than 1%. So, and keep in mind that we were up in the spring a little bit. So we're holding our own, and I still am very optimistic about us coming out of this. The students are out there and the population's out there. And you'll see it, I think, in some of the census returns when we look at the number of people that have, that have continued to move in and all the housing starts. The next one that we haven't shared very much with you is, uh, go to the next slide. Link, if you would, please. So I want to be clear about this. We were not rated the best in-state employer. I wish we were, but they, we were in the top, we were number 35 out of 100 that they identified. And again, you can see, um, what some of the criteria is. I'm, I'm proud of the fact that, again, our employees are, are making these judgments about, you know, we do pay attention to this. And so, um, I'm, I'm proud of both of those. It speaks highly of, uh, our employees, I will say. And I've said this at every meeting, but we're doing well because of our faculty and staff and our administrators. Our faculty are really helping our students. And I think you're going to see, I was looking at some numbers. We actually increased, uh, our enrollment this semester and for African-American students and Hispanic students. And that's just the opposite of what's happening at most of the other colleges, where you're seeing a drop-off in enrollment and minority students. So I, I think we're doing a lot of good things. We, I always think we can do better, but at least, uh, we're aware of it and we've got to focus on it. So, and I think that's the last slide that I have. Yeah.
Thank you, Chancellor. Board members, do we have any special reports or announcements?
Yes, trustee Kane?
Yes, sir.
Had the pleasure of, um, hearing Dr. Quentin Wright make a presentation to the Champions Breakfast Club about Houston North and, um, the, the challenges that he faces and also the, uh, opportunities and the, um, successes. And, uh, he did a great job with that presentation and was very well received by the club. Uh, lots of good questions, and, uh, he did a great job, uh, overall explaining everything that they are doing and, uh, received, uh, uh, very nice applause at the conclusion of his presentation.
Yeah, thank you. The, the enrollment jumped down there. He's doing a great job down there. And it's a different, um, it's a different structure, and they're having to work really hard. But he, I, I talked to him, uh, yesterday, and he's told me to keep doing what he's doing. They're making a lot of progress. Thank you for the comments.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I had a question for Dr. Higgin, and then I also have something to add. Dr. Higgin, we were talking about, uh, it was great that Lone Star made for us. Don't get me wrong, but how are our surveys done? Are they done anonymously? Are they randomly selected? How do you get the people to do the survey? How, how, how do they select? I get this one, I want to know, the selection process.
I'm gonna let Mario talk about this because it's handled through his office.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Okay, hold on, he's coming in.
Yes, ma'am. So usually they ask for, uh, a sample size of employees, and then they take the list that we send them, and then they pick who to email, and then they email those individuals, and it is anonymous.
Uh, well, Mario, how's it going to be anonymous if you give them?
Well, ma'am, we give them the list of the employees. So they'll say, you know, give us, uh, all of your full-time faculty. And so we send the list of contact information, and then they reach out to, they pick who they reach out to, and then they email, and we have no knowledge of who they pick or even the percentages that they're picking.
Randomly pick it? I mean, once you give them the, uh, the employees, the students, that you, they randomly pick them? I'm just, well, how do they pick them? I guess it's, it's not you, but it's them. How they, I don't know, you don't know how they do it? They just randomly do it, just, you know?
Yes, ma'am. They do it, so they're different, right? So it's two different companies that do those two reports. Uh, but they're the ones that pick from essentially a population that they request from us.
Okay, okay, just wanted to know.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, and I, what I wanted to say, I, uh, I had a chance, I was invited to, um, to visit, on tour, rather, School Legacy. And it's a school of sports sciences. And I think it's a very, you know, very interesting school, very interesting. And, uh, not just for athletics, but, you know, for anything that has to do with sports. And I understand that, uh, I don't know if Dr. Blansin is here, but I understand that they're doing a partnership with, uh, North Harris. If he isn't here, that's okay. I can always email him.
With, no, I, I didn't hear the last part of a partnership with?
They're doing something with Lone Star North Harris. I wasn't quite, it's, it's, I think it's a grant program, Dr. Higgin. I'm not quite, I mean, I like it, you know, whatever it is, but I, I can't, you know, I can't put my, my acronym together. It was something PAC or TECH, I don't know, something like that.
Can you, can you send me an email? Then I'll.
I, I will, I will. I'll email him too. But I thought, I thought the school, I didn't even know the school, you know, is in the area where I live. And, uh, I think it's been up and running about three, four years. But it's a very interesting concept. And, uh, I also thought that, uh, Fallbrook has the esports program. Don't they have the esports pathway?
Yes, okay, esports, yes. We'll give you an update over that. You know, in the last, um, I think maybe in the last meeting we had, there were some questions about esports, but, um,
Yeah, I remember, yeah.
I don't know whether you saw St. Thomas, University of St. Thomas, is that?
Yeah, I saw that. I read that. I saw that, yeah, very interesting.
That too. Uh, we'll be competing with them sometime in the next year or so. Uh, I, I'll, uh, you know, I may have, uh, Dr. Wright come in and give an update on esports. It's worth, it's, it's, uh, it's a good program for a lot of different students. And, and, uh, the students are making a lot of, it's a, it's a, uh, occupation. Students are actually making money doing it, making a lot of.
But it's all stressing because I don't want my grandkids deciding they want to go to esports. They want to be gamers.
Well, if you're 100,000 or 200,000, you might, but well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Any further comments?
Yes, ma'am, Mike Sullivan?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, appreciate it. I wanted, uh, just share with the board and the administration two events that I attended recently. One was the dedication of the Guy, Dr. Guy Sconzo Early Education High School, on a Saturday, great event, well-attended. And during the presentations, Dr. Higgin, the administration took great pains to recognize the partnership with Lone Star College Kingwood. And I was particularly proud to see Dr. Melissa Gonzalez at the event as well. Uh, she was talking to people and mixing and mingling and making sure that people knew who she was, continuing to integrate herself with the community that she serves. So two things come out of that. One, her involvement, and two, uh, the partnership between, uh, Lone Star College System and Lone Star College Kingwood and Uble ISD. So that's very positive. I'm proud to be associated with that. Second thing was last week, I took a tour of the EMI facility there next to University Park. And if anyone's interested in robotics, automation, um, hands-on training, software, uh, just great facility, very real, uh, skills that can be learned and, uh, put to work right away, either as someone new, uh, looking for a new profession or people in business who are looking to upgrade their skills. So heads off to Stephen, uh, who is the dean over there and others that make it all happen. And, uh, once again, just another example of what goes on at Lone Star, which I'd, I'd like to see more of us talk about and more of us get out and do. And, and two, it's great to, to be a policymaker and talk about contracts and clarity and transparency and things. But really, we've got to keep in mind that the, at the root of it is, is, um, taking care of our students and providing services and programs that benefit our students. And that's what it's all about. So I think both can be done very easily. It's not one or the other. So thank you, Chair.
We're, we're working actively with the federal government and the state government. I will tell you about some workforce programs, and we'll have an update at the next meeting. We're actively engaged with them over, uh, increasing training opportunities. And we're doing some really unique stuff that, uh, we haven't, I mean, we're working with, uh, AI. We've been asked to work with the city on forensics. In addition to some of the things you're already hearing, the oil industry, believe it or not, is actually coming back in a different way, though, a lot of technology. So we'll, we'll share that with you in the, at the next meeting. There's a lot of, a lot of activity going on behind the scenes with us, and it's all good for our students, by the way.
Can I add a comment, Dr. Higgin and Chair? Um, you know, we all, as trustees, we serve the entire system. And while we're elected in districts, and I'm the Kingwood guy, so to speak, uh, I want to just say how nice it is as a trustee to ask to tour a facility that's not in your quote-unquote district. And when I reached out to Desiree to set up the tour, uh, they could not have been more welcoming. And, uh, I think that says a lot about the leadership that you have in place across the system, uh, Dr. Higgin. And that's that it's not us against them, it's not the east side versus the west side or anything. This is a unified, well-functioning system with some great leadership and great people on the ground making things happen. So, uh, maybe I'm, I'm going a little too far with this, and I apologize, but it, it's a great feeling as a policymaker to know that we're welcomed out in, in the field.
May I comment on something, trustee Sullivan, real quick?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
So I see that you visited University Park, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you know that park, that university's in my district. You did not. Where, where was my invitation?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I, I warmed the robots up for you. How's that?
All right, that works.
Good catch. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, trustees? If I may, just real quickly, I just want to go back to Dr. Wright. I mean, I just want to really commend on how he's so available in our community. This Tuesday, I was invited to participate in the Aldine ISD La Promesa Program, which is a program where they, uh, help newly arrived immigrants to kind of place them into, you know, several programs in public education. So I thought that was, that's a really good program for them. And, um, Dr. Wright was there, so I really appreciate Lone Star College participating in those kinds of programs and events.
He, he's all over the place. Most of our, eh, eh, not most of them, our presidents are very active in the community, as they, as they should be.
Thank you. You guys are doing such an awesome job. Thank you so much. And ma'am, I am so sorry I skipped over you, so I am sorry. Um, can we go to faculty senate president?
So let me introduce, uh, Dr. Sandra Harvey, who is the Faculty Senate President over at Sci Fair. And she's speaking, uh, tonight on dual credit, but she's speaking on behalf of all the Faculty Senate Presidents. So we meet, um, I, probably monthly, and we talk about different things, about system-wide issues with the Faculty Senate. But, uh, so I'm going to turn this over to her.
Thank you, Chancellor Head, and, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Chairwoman and Board of Trustees. I did think it was kind of interesting that trustee Sullivan said something about dual credit. I, I promise I didn't pay him to give me an introduction, uh, but it's going to go right into my presentation. Um, I, this actually came, uh, and I'm referring to this as the great equalizer, dual credit. And you'll see what I mean in just a moment. Whoops, it was a little bit more responsive than I thought. This is typically, um, in listening to the board meetings, um, I've heard several of the trustees ask questions about dual credit. And typically what happens is I always hear, um, here are the contracts. This is actually one from the June meeting. Um, here are, um, the, the, the schools that we're working with. And then I went to the SACs website, and these are all the, well, not all. There's, there's way more than what's on the screen. But this is what's on SACs website in regard to the number of off-site locations that we have contracts with and negotiations with. And so I, I thought about it, and I kept saying to myself, and I talked to the Faculty Senate Presidents about wanting to present on dual credit, not from the numbers perspective, because the numbers you can get from reports, the numbers you can look at on the charts. But what you may not realize is what value dual credit has to the Lone Star College community. And so that's one of the questions that I'm posing tonight, is how important is dual credit to the Lone Star College community? So I, I will say ahead of time, if, if the trustees have questions in regards to numbers, I have no numbers whatsoever, because as Professor, um, as Chancellor Head said, this is about, um, a collective presentation of Lone Star College dual credit, not, um, an individual campus presentation.
We have 19,000 students taking dual credit classes.
I didn't say that yet. Yes, exactly, and it's growing. It's continuing to grow, of course. So one of the things I thought I would start with is what are some of the challenges to new college students? And this is not dual credit schools. I'm talking about, uh, students who graduate from high school. And this is not an exhaustive list. But we definitely see isolation, loss of high school groups. Um, they're in unfamiliar territories. I hear this all the time from my students. A lack of strong support system. And I'm not talking about per se that maybe, it may be that they, they don't have their families as supportive. Maybe they do, but it also is that they are no longer in the environment where they are supported by the advisors and the counselors and the teachers. They're really having to navigate a new area. There's also family pressures, and most importantly, financial obstacles. And what I'm showing you here is, this is from the fall of 2021 tuition for 12 credit hours. Now, obviously, the, the, there are, as, as some of the private schools say, there are sticker shock. Um, and I will have a caveat here that on all the private schools, they say 90% of their students receive financial aid. So clearly, that's not the bottom line. But if you're coming out of a high school, and, um, if your family is struggling, especially with COVID, many of our families are struggling, um, even the cost of 4,000 a semester, and that does not include books, and that does not include, um, room and board, can be exhaustive for many families. So you might say, well, Lone Star is probably a better option, and that is true. What is 12 credit hours at Lone Star this semester? It's $1,080. But even $1,080 can be difficult for some of our families right now, no matter which college that they are at, whether it's Sci Fair, Tomball, Montgomery, Kingwood, or, um, North Harris, or Houston North, or, um, Montgomery, or University Park. And so in this presentation, I decided to go back to our vision. And so we are charged to not only have exceptional levels of student learning, but also we're talking about student completion, gainful employment, equity, and we heard a lot about equity tonight, and affordability. Those are the things that we are charged with going forward from Lone Star College. And so what I want to show you just briefly is how dual credit is actually not only meeting those expectations, but exceeding those expectations beyond what many of us might really realize. First off, you are probably aware that, again, all these partnerships, we have partnerships with ISDs. We have partnerships with private schools. We have partnerships with, um, charter schools. And then there's the whole other category, which is the homeschool, uh, dual credits that actually come to our physical campuses. Um, we have early college, we have iSchool, we have College Academy, and we have workforce pathways. And again, this, this is all great, but what does that actually translate into? And this is just some examples as well, just, uh, from North Harris's website. What we need to recognize is the different pathways that we're creating in dual credit is providing opportunity. And opportunity is also connecting back to our vision, which is the equity. It means that students who are coming from any of our service areas, um, and even those outside, have the opportunity to be able to achieve a dream, to achieve a goal that they have set for themselves, uh, but in an environment that is one that they are familiar with, with instructors that they are, uh, they are, they know, with advisors and counselors that they feel comfortable with, and with student cohorts that are their friends and colleagues, and that will provide them with that support. Um, we also have, just, uh, just to give you some examples, this is actually from the Tomball Star Academy, um, orientation and fall semester, and you can see that, that the house is packed as students are clamoring to this idea of being able to be a part of a dual credit program like what Tomball and the other campuses are arguing, or are, are providing. But dual credit is not just about getting the academic, uh, academic credits. It's also, of course, about workforce, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. But these are just some of the shots of some of our dual credit students in action. I mentioned you have iCollege, you have early college, you have College Academy. Um, I'm heavily connected in dual credit with Lone Star Sci Fair. I'm the dual credit history chair. And our program, of course, is the College Academy. And what you're looking at here was from 2018, and we had 140 students that were starting at 14 years old as freshmen that were going to be guaranteed a high school diploma if they completed the credits by the time, or excuse me, not high school, a college diploma at the same time they received their high school diploma. But this is just one of many of the pathways. Another part of our vision is gainful employment. You mentioned it just a moment ago with, uh, we talked about esports and opportunities. And gainful employment is definitely something that's on the mind of dual credit. Um, in fact, North Harris has just received the Great Texas Foundation, a $200,000 grant um, that is entitled Dual Credit for All. And we're going to be able to offer these type of certificate programs that mean when a student graduates from high school, they also walk out with a certificate that allows them to. them to immediately go and find a full-time job as a skilled professional. And something that, for some of our students, maybe they can go on to college and continue on before they move into their profession, but for others, they need to move a little bit quicker, and these are some opportunities that are available. This is a new program that we have just instituted this year, and we currently have 13 Tomball ISD students that are enrolled in the Electrical Technology Program. Again, another, this is with our Creekside Center, but another example of some of the work that we're doing with dual credit. And then, of course, our Carver and Aldine ISD, we've got the new mechatronics and interior design. And I'm showing you these images, but please understand, these are not all the programs we have. If I were to show you all of them, we would be here for at least an hour, just to be able to get through all the different ones. But I just wanted to highlight some of the ones that have been in the forefront of people's minds over the last couple of months. In terms of opportunity, and I talked about going back to the vision, another thing that we tell the community is that we are affordable. And remember, I said, I showed you the universities and the 12 hours right now, and you saw that the expense could be great for many of our students. And then I mentioned that, well, Lone Star College is only $1,080, but even that can be expensive. So what I'm showing you here is the cost of dual credit. Now, understand, some of those programs, they are funded by foundations and grants, and so some of those students and some of those programs do not pay a dual credit fee. But if you're in a traditional dual credit program, this is what you are looking at. And so for those same 12 credit hours that would cost a student on a Sci Fair campus, on a Tomball campus of $1,080, they are able to get 12 credit hours within the high school environment with certified, qualified instructors with oversight from the Lone Star College campuses for $768. It is really amazing to be able to do that for these students. And then, of course, one of the biggest component is that the vision talks about is completion. How are we actually getting the students where we need them to be? And that is another example of the opportunity that dual credit provides. You'll look here, this is from I-School High. This is, we see in Montgomery. They had 55 graduates in the senior class, but of those 55, 12 of them actually earned also their associate's degree. 27% of the class. I know that, and we're going to increase those numbers, I know, as time progresses. This is a very interesting one, from Klein Forest High School. These four students that you're looking at here collectively earned 112 dual credit hours, 112 hours. And these four students are currently enrolled and attending the colleges that you see listed there. This is the valedictorian from our spring Early College Academy, of course, 2019, pre-COVID. But again, this is a young woman, along with her classmates, who were able to not only get their high school degree, but also earn their college degree and set them on a pathway for opportunity, which equals the things that we are talking about. And of course, Infinity Early College Graduates in 2018, the Nimitz High School Early College Graduates. Here's another Nimitz High School. I love this one because it reflects the pandemic. It reflects our COVID, but yet they're still excited, of course. High school and college graduates from 2020. Here's Tomball Star Academy graduates of 2021. Royal High School Early College Graduates of 2021. Klein Advanced Nursing Graduates of 2021. And do you remember the group I showed you at the beginning with the College Academy? When Sci Fair, we first started with Sci Lakes High School, and we had 140 graduates, I mean, 140 enrollees at the freshman level? Well, not all of them made it to graduation, for various reasons, but this was the inaugural class of 85 Sci Lakes students who graduated with their associate's degree, as well as their high school. And many of these students, we were tracking to see, they have gone on to the universities. Some of them haven't, but many of them have. And that's one of the things I personally would like to see, is if we can track our students as to where they go on beyond the dual credit program. And this is a quote from Haley, who was one of the Sci Lakes High School students, and I think it just really reflects one of the things that I hope the board recognizes, that what dual credit and what your support of dual credit is doing for our students in our community. As she said here, "I learned real lifetime management skills, which allowed me to opportunities to participate in band, football games, band contests with my closest friends, knowing that my grades wouldn't suffer. I learned to organize, adjust, and prioritize, and now I'm ready to walk into that first class this fall semester, confident knowing that I was able to finish two years of college as a high school band student." And if you have any knowledge with a high school band student, you know they never have any time. She says, "I can just do anything." And this, of course, from one of our dual credit college graduates. So going back to our vision, are we achieving the goals of what we want with dual credit? And is it actually filling our vision more than what you may even realize? And I would argue yes. I'm in the high schools a lot. I see the students, their excitement. They love being a part of Lone Star College, and that the parents are grateful for the support that the board has given to the dual credits and to the program as well. And so I think as Faculty Senate Presidents, one of the things we love to see is student success, and this is definitely one of those successful areas. And so just very quickly, what's the future? Well, this is from a publication that was in May. You can see that we're continuing to expand our partnerships, and just like you did tonight, you approved additional partnerships. Dual credit is only going to continue to grow, and I wanted to say thank you on behalf of the dual credits. Thank you on behalf of the students, the parents, and the Faculty Senate Presidents for allowing me to present this to you tonight. So what is dual credit? It is the great equalizer.
Great.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you. Any comments? I do want to say something real quick. I think it's, I was, I was a student. I took dual credit in high school, and so I think it really helped me as a student. And it is true, it can be kind of scary going to high school and then getting ready to go to college. It is, I know probably some students might be a little bit scared, but the dual credit program really did help, help me. So I'm sure if you need any further support, just let us know. We'll make sure and do that for you. I think it's very important, those programs.
Oh, it is. And of course, with, we talk about success. I was looking at the Texas State, the Texas Higher Education Board's report on dual credit, and they were talking about there are higher success rates among students who come out of the dual credit programs in the universities. And so I know, you know, I know it's definitely giving that jumpstart that so many of our students need. And so when I think about our vision, there's no better example of it than, I think, our dual credit programs. And for the workforce, for the academic side, it doesn't matter. It's just...
Before you leave, so I testified on this last session, not this past session, but the one before that. Lone Star College students that took dual credit, they did, and Gerald, I'd like an update on the report current for dual credit. So when our students transferred to universities, if they took dual credit here, they actually had a higher GPA and a higher graduation rate than students, native students, students that started at the university. And we also know the students that graduated from Lone Star, if they went through dual credit, they have higher GPAs and a higher graduation rate than students that didn't go through dual credit.
Well, considering the fact I have a student that was a dual credit and is at the university, his grades are higher. And I asked him why, and he said it matters more.
Yeah. The other thing I would add, and I can tell you for a fact, because three of my children went through dual credit, you save a lot of money by going to Lone Star first and getting just ready, not only academically, but getting ready for college socially and emotionally and...
Exactly. And for me, also, it's one thing to, it's also good for the community. They have better connection to Lone Star College if their children are in dual credit. It helps them to understand what Lone Star is really doing, and especially supporting the kids the way that we are. It's, to me, it's a wonderful program.
Yeah, thank you.
It is. Thank you, ma'am. All right. If we can go to financial reports.
Good evening. I do have a bit more in my financial report this month. If we could go to the next slide, please. First, there is an agenda here on this first slide. I'd like to go through first an update on our COVID stimulus funds. Next slide. And then a brief update on our current fiscal year budget. And then finally, will be sort of my regular monthly financial report. Yes, so here's the three items I wanted to present on tonight. Next slide, please. So for our COVID stimulus grant funds, and this is another header. So if we could go to the next slide, please. I think next time I'll just cut out some of the header slides. But I do want to note here, though, that this report that I'm giving, the data is as of September 15th. That is important to note, because for the fall term, Dr. Head already alluded to this, that for the fall term, our disbursements, the awards, went out starting this week. We're not quite done yet. But so the fall awards are not reflected in what is presented here. That will be included in an update that I can provide at the November board meeting. So please note that this does not include the current fall awards. But here is the summary of the COVID stimulus funds. So in total, we've been awarded $216 million. Of that, within that, $86 million is the minimum that we are required to award to students. In terms of the spending, so far, we have spent $69 million, with $46 million of this has been awarded to students. And as I mentioned, for the fall, we are getting out another $25 million. So that'll be coming next month's update, that there's another $25 million going out for the fall term, this week and next week, in addition to the $46 million shown here. So for the remaining, there's $147 million remaining, right? For the student portion, $40 million is what is left to be awarded towards the minimum distribution. Lone Star College does plan on distributing more student awards than is required. We're planning on $162 million total in planned student awards. So that's where you can see in the remaining, we will do another $40 million, 25 of which is going out this term. So I feel, so we should finish the entire minimum student distribution of awards in the spring term. And then from there, we will begin on the additional student aid distributions that Lone Star College is doing above the required amounts. Next slide, please. So this chart, as it comes up, does show the counts by campus, and the count in total is 51,800 unique students. So, and Dr. Head earlier mentioned 60,000. He is already factoring the students that are getting awards this term. So yes, we have helped about 60,000, if not more, students between what is shown here on this chart and what we are currently dispersing this fall term. And this is in addition to our normal Pell Grants that goes out to students every term. And that's about 13,000 to 15,000 students each term that receives Pell Grants. And of the stimulus funds, about 71% of the stimulus funds is going to Pell Grant recipients. The grant awards does ask that we prioritize financial need. All students are eligible, so there is 29% of students who are not Pell eligible, who have also received awards, but we are prioritizing the financial need criteria. Next slide, please. So wanted to show here the population of award recipients versus our student population. And again, the award criteria, the ethnicity is not part of the award criteria at all. It is really just the Pell, Pell versus non-Pell changes the amount of the awards, so we can prioritize financial need. And then from there, it is based on the number of credit hours enrolled. Those are the only two criteria involved in setting award amounts per student. But this reflects that it does, it is representative of our student population and representative of prioritizing that financial need. Next slide, please. So this slide and the next slide, I did include some student testimonials on the stimulus funds that they have received. I'll give you a moment to look through those yourselves, just to see how this is helping students. Next slide, please.
Can you, can you back up one? One slide. Board, I just wanted you to see, the one that struck me when we were reviewing this is Lauren down at the bottom. So she's in a program. She's working 40 to 45 hours a week, and she's a mom. So when we think about, sometimes you think about the money, and is it being used for good purposes? The answer is yes, I think.
Next slide, please. Yes, it is definitely being used to help purchase books, to not incur debt, some who are unemployed, and textbooks cover and life expenses. Next slide, please. And with this slide, I'm not intended for you necessarily to read all the information on here. This is just to give a visual to show how much work we are also doing to ensure that the awarding of the stimulus funds and the institutional uses as well is in compliance. So a huge thank you to our resource development and administration team, as well as audit and consulting services teams. They are, we are, the internal audit team, we are, that they are auditing ourselves internally regularly, on a constant basis. They are looking at how we are awarding and noting things, noting improvements that we can make along the way, and we are doing those improvements. So we are also making sure that we are compliant along the way of distributing the award amounts. Next slide, please. And if we could go two slides to skip the header. So yes, now I would like to move on to just the current fiscal year budget update. So for the fall term, well, really to back up, for the current fiscal year 2022, which started September 1st and goes to next August 31st, 2022, for the budget that this board adopted in August, the assumption was flat credit hours. So you see that in the one column, it zeros, because that means there was no incremental change assumed in the revenues. But for the fall term, we have official day. This does not yet factor in. We have some next start classes, and we have second eight-week terms. But from the primary official day term, we were actually down 2.4% in credit hours. So being fiscally conservative, we want to make sure that along the way, we are keeping our revenues and our operational expenditures in balance, right? Even with healthy cash reserves, those are one-time resources. We want to make sure, right, that our income and our bills stay in alignment with each other. So to adjust for the 2.4% decline in credit hours, we are estimating that is an impact of $1.1 million on this year's budget. And so already yesterday, to all of the presidents of the campuses and vice chancellors of system office business areas, each area, all areas are making budget adjustments to bring the budget back in alignment with this $1.1 million impact. So we will be offsetting this estimated revenue impact with adjustments to expenditures. Next slide, please. And again, if we could go two slides. So now I just want to do shift to the regular monthly financial report. And this is the final financial report. I am backing up now one fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. This is the last report for that fiscal year of August 31st, 2021. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these slides, because they are preliminary unaudited numbers. At the December board meeting is when I will bring to the board the full comprehensive annual financial report as we complete closing our books and going through the audit and producing that report. But to give this preliminary picture of fiscal year 2021, as we were noting throughout that fiscal year, we were exceeding our budgeted revenues, and at the end of the day, we did. We collected $385 million, or 102% of what we had budgeted. We were expecting that along the way, because if you remember, last year, we had budgeted that we would be down 10% in credit hours, and at the end of the day, we were down about 4.5%. Next slide, please. In fiscal year 2021, we also continued until the end of that fiscal year, a hiring freeze, and continued to watch very closely our expenditures, to just continue to spend very cautiously. And that is reflected in our actual expenditures of $339 million, which was 91% of the budget. So we did do a pretty good job here of watching what we were spending along the way. Next slide, please. And really, these next two charts reflects that same thing. The revenues here, it shows you by separate item, and that on the... you by separate item, and that, on the revenue side, that's 7.4 million in revenues above the budgeted amount, is what we are estimating, to have the 385 million total in actual revenues. Next slide, please. And then this one shows the expenditures, where we had budgeted $372 million, and actually spent $339 million in expenditures. I believe that, next slide, please, or that might be my last slide. Yes, the grounds report. So that concludes my report for the monthly financial report. Again, that's the last one for fiscal year 2021, with the comprehensive annual financial report coming in December. And then next month, the monthly report will be the first one for fiscal year 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Board members, any comments or questions? All right, here and done. Thank you so much, Jennifer and your team, for keeping us, keeping us good. Members, if we can go to future agenda items, do you have any suggestions for any future agenda items?
Madam Chair, I have a question. I know that, this is trustee Pierce, I'm sorry. I know that October 1st was the last day for nominations for the replacement of District 7 trustee. Is the board going to get a list of those, the nominations that were put forth?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Trustee Pierce, I just left that, I forgot to, that's my era. Yes, we've received three completed applications, and you'll be sent those, I'm looking at Desiree, probably tomorrow. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Is trustee Pierce, was that your question?
Yes, that was, he answered it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, so no further questions or comments, it's 7:12, and we adjourn this meeting.